Good morning, everybody. Consider a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, shall we call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins, are you on the phone?
Yes.
Your vote?
I think that was a yes vote.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Need a motion to approve our consent.
Madam Chair, I had a question on number seven.
Okay.
What is the renewal fee?
What is the renewal fee?
For which license?
Well, they're all grouped together, what is it all the same?
It is not. So retail liquor, depending on whether it's closer to Sioux Falls or some other municipality, is fourteen hundred or fifteen hundred. And the wine retail renewal is five hundred, with half going to the state.
Okay, thank you, that's what I wanted to know.
Motion to approve?
Is there a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
Thank you, shall we call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
All right, first item on our agenda is a second public hearing and second reading.
This is a second public hearing and second reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County regarding the issuance of local medical cannabis establishment permits by amending ordinance twenty-one zero six hyphen thirty.
Thank you, is the applicant present?
Susan.
Good morning, Bill. What am I missing?
That it's a little frantic for me this morning, sorry, I apologize.
Okay, that's all right.
So this is the second reading for the ordinance on medical marijuana. There were some general changes made to meet the rules previously. I have one ahead and provided an updated copy here this morning. I have a couple of extra copies if anybody wants one. The, one of the considerations or questions was about background checks, and that's on page two, it's section two. That section just strictly defines what a background is. If you look through the area to eighteen, under medical cannabis establishments and agents, it defines who medical marijuana establishment agents are. And they are people who work in the business or are part of the business. And then throughout the ordinance, in the different sections, I believe, under management operation, it says who has to have a background check. And then it once again defines those individuals as the individuals who are agents. And then it goes on to list who has to have the background checked. So it isn't just anyone who comes into the facility, it is specifically the officers, the owners, or the employees, or volunteer within the facilities. So there was a question whether or not we needed to further define that. I believe it's defined further down through. So I think that there's just one reading of it as to who's eligible for it. One of the other issues was bringing our ordinance in compliance with the rules, going from twenty-one to eighteen. And so those changes were made within this document. One of the areas was changing adult to contractor. And which section was that? That is on page four. And that would bring it in line with the rule that uses contractor instead of adult. The reason adult was initially selected was because it was limiting who could enter the establishment for the public. So it would exclude minors. If you change it to contractor, you will move, remove that. And then the ordinance is silent, and I believe the rules are silent on whether or not minors can actually enter the facility. So that would be something I'd ask for some guidance, if you would like to make that contractor versus adult, that would be the change.
And you say that's on page four?
That's on page four. And of course, I don't think I highlighted it.
I'm looking, I'm looking.
It's
I don't see it on page four.
I don't either.
Oh, that's where my notes are, so. Just.
Is it under the definition section?
Yes.
And what definition would we be looking at?
Let's see.
We went through the background check on number two.
I think it is Yes. No, I don't think that was the one I intended. There's a section that talks about the employees and who has to do that, I think it's under the management section. When I printed these it is actually under the place of operation. It would be number four, it is highlighted. And it is in a string of any cultivation or harvesting or packaging. And who can access the cannabis medical establishment or emergency personnel, an adult or at least twenty-one years of age. In the rule, it says contractor.
And where it says contractor?
In the rules for the state.
In the statutes?
Yes, because this is basically mirrored off of it. But when this was initially drafted and adopted the conscious, well, made the choice to put adults in there, and defines that only adults are going to be in the miracle marijuana establishment. If you change it to contractors, then it removes it to just talking about employees and not the general public. So then it is an open question whether or not, who can enter the facility. So that's a policy question before you, is do you want to say, in Lincoln County, we don't want minors in the facility? Or is it one of those things where you just want to limit this section to employees and who goes in there and leave it as an open question? If somebody wants to walk in with a child under the age of eighteen, can they do that? That would be an open question.
I'm not in favor of children being in these facilities.
So that was the choice, that's the reason the term adult was used instead of contractor.
So you think this is more clear than the statute?
It has a different purpose than what the statute was, was to define whether or not minors can enter the facility.
Okay.
So this would not allow a minor to come in?
No, they should not be individuals under the age of eighteen.
Under what we have here.
Right.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
And what other changes, Bill?
And then the other change, we went ahead and went through in all of the areas where it had been twenty-one, we changed all those to eighteen. So that's inconsistent with what state rules are.
Eighteen, right?
Eighteen, yes.
A minor, okay.
And then there is a policy question for you, which is the class-two misdemeanor at the end. When we initially adopted that, the discussion around that was, if somebody has a Ziploc bag of marijuana, and law enforcement comes up to them, and they ask, you know, can you legally possess that? If they pull out a marijuana card, that ends the conversation. Because if they have a medical marijuana card, and they have a Ziploc bag, they're not using it and they're in possession of it. That makes that marijuana deemed to be legal, we have no other way to determine where it sources from.
I didn't think that was true. If it came from a facility, that they would be able to tell where it came from, because of the packaging.
If it's in the package, we can. And so the intent of this was that if you're going to transport it, it needs to be in a labeled package, or it's a class-two misdemeanor. Versus if you have it in some other form, then law enforcement, the instructions we've given them and our policy is, we can inquire as to where that marijuana came from, because they have a marijuana card. They're deemed to be able to use that marijuana legally. And so the reason the class-two misdemeanor was put in this section was an attempt to protect the licensees. Because if they're selling legal marijuana, we would like to see that in a labeled package from that facility. And so therefore, for law enforcement, it's easy. If it's in a labeled package from a medical marijuana dispensary, we're going to assume it's legal. At least they bought it once, and they have the package that they can put it in. Okay? Now, nothing's foolproof. I believe Ned brought up a good point, which is talks about possession, if somebody just had a cartridge or something else with them. If they didn't have it labeled, if it isn't something that's, we can identify, then it's a class-two misdemeanor, because it's not packaged and coming from a legal facility. This is mirrored on the alcohol statutes for open container. With the idea being the package should be sealed if it's in a vehicle or transported, or it should be in a marijuana package that we can identify as coming from a legal source. And it's a class-two misdemeanor. So that's, at this point, I don't believe we have any open facilities in Lincoln County. We haven't used this class-two misdemeanor. We haven't run into that problem yet. So this was anticipating a way to protect the licensees. If there's a better way to do it, or a different way to word it, so we can be a little more precise, but that's the intention is, if you buy, if you obtain a license, you have a legal facility, you're running it under all the rules and regulations, then we should have an obligation to make sure that illegal operations aren't selling marijuana in Lincoln County.
Bill, whether this makes any difference or not, or Ned, because when we went through the facility in Flandre, we were given specific, asked the same question, and what we were told was that as long as it was sealed, it was okay. But once you break the seal, then you are violating the tenet of the law. And we're saying the same thing. So if you just have a baggie full of marijuana buds or whatever, however you have it, that is not an indication of anything other than you have an open container. Same thing.
Yes.
But if it was sealed, and from the, our reputable business they bought it from, that's okay, that complies. So it's, it's rather simple in a way.
Right, and if you have an open baggie, and you want to transport it, if you put it in your trunk, and you can't reach it or get to it, there, I mean, the way it's written is like the open container, it's not available to you. If you have chewables, and there's an open container, you put it in your trunk, well, then you can transport it that way. But you can't have it in the passenger seat next to you. And it needs to be labeled. That was the intentions. If there's a suggestion on how to improve that or change it, or if we don't want that to be a part of this provision, we can strike it.
So Bill, what you're saying, in other words, if you have purchased this product, and you break the seal, when it's legal, when you're in your own premises, and you want to travel somewhere, you take that, but it has the broken seal on it indicating it was purchased, you put it in your trunk of your car or wherever, where you don't have access to it while you're engaged in driving, that's okay?
Yes, under our statutes in Lincoln County, for this purpose, it's probably a wise practice for anybody who's traveling, because if they don't want to have to go through Phil Sobriety Tests, it's probably just a good idea to have it someplace else where they don't get questioned.
It could be in a Moscow jail, always.
Well, it is, essentially, it's like our open container law.
That is exactly where it was taken from. Basically, we changed alcohol to marijuana, and just kind of went down through it and made it read that way. Because there isn't really an equivalent in state statutes. And we were looking for some way to identify illegal marijuana from legally obtained marijuana. So that was the intent.
All right, anybody else have questions for Bill? All right. This is a public hearing. I would ask if there are any proponents of this, these ordinance changes to come up and give testimony, be limited to three minutes? Anybody wanting to speak in opposition?
Hi, Ned Horsted, representing Six-O-Five Cannabis. We are a licensed medical cannabis establishment, just off the I-29, Highway eighteen exit, just west of here. Not necessarily speaking as a proponent or opponent, but I'll try to keep this brief. I do appreciate the work that Lincoln County's done throughout, being kind of a leader and getting an ordinance before anyone else. Bill did some great work here updating this. The one piece on the background check, I guess we're fine with that. If you had a loyalty card at the sheriff's office, we'd probably be maxing that out. We're sending probably on average one a week, since we opened up our product manufacturing and cultivation facility. My only concern here is just clarity around how the process works. So it says to forward to the county all information obtained as a result of the criminal investigation. Do they also forward that to the licensee? We pay twenty-six seventy-five for every DCI background check, we send that. My concern is that we would end up paying twice, or if they can just do like a carbon copy, send one to the county, one to us. Do we go talk to the auditor's office, you know, for permission to hire after that background check comes? It's just a little unclear on how that works from a business standpoint.
Bill, can you come up and address that? I know there's rules about disseminating those
Pause my time.
Yep, those NCIC reports.
So those are controlled by an interstate compact between the states and the federal government.
Right.
And they are highly regulated in order for us to run them, we have to keep them locked, we have to account for each person that runs them, and we can't hand them out. So what we could do, I mean, we haven't had a problem so far, but if we had one that came back with something, then we would notify the licensee that there was an issue, but we wouldn't tell you what it was. Because we're not allowed to.
All right, thanks. Go ahead, Ned.
Okay. Manner of operation, there's just one, one change I would recommend. It says anyone who is a, part one, anyone who is a board member, principal officer, et cetera. I would, I think background checks should only be required for folks that are handling cannabis or cannabis products. We have Midco, we have CHS, we've got all sorts of contractors that are in there. They're not handling cannabis or cannabis products, it would be unrealistic to background check absolutely everyone with the current language. And manner of operation, section one. Think that's fine, I'm the next one, I'll skip past that. In terms of applications submitted to the county, the fee, the governing body may reject an application for new medical cannabis establishment or facility, if a business would possess more than one license in the jurisdiction. I just wanted to confirm that may means it leaves it up to the wisdom of the county commission to choose, like if someone actually could do that, may as a
What are you talking about, Ned?
Under license, these aren't numbered unfortunately. License application contents.
Okay.
Application submitted to county fee, there's a paragraph right under that, it says the governing body may reject an application for new medical cannabis establishment. I'm just getting clarity that may means they could or could not.
That's discretionary.
Okay, cool. Wanted confirmation there. Finally, to the criminal section, I really appreciate what Bill and his team are trying to do here by protecting license holders. My caution would be this gets really, really sticky and difficult to enforce, I think. You know, as we all know, Lincoln County's been trying to build a jail for a really long time, I'm just extremely hesitant to add additional criminal statutes to a licensing ordinance. You know, it specifically talks about possession in section one, which, under thirty-four twenty G two, is legal for a medical cardholder. So that would certainly have to go, in my opinion. Thirty-four twenty G eighteen also has stuff around what is allowed or what is not allowed. They talk about the driving piece there, all of that. And then section four in particular, it says a certificate from a physician stating the person's authorized for cultivation. That actually changed this last legislative session as well, where you don't have to, you know, doctors don't get involved on whether or not you can or cannot home grow, or how much you can have on there. So that would actually be, the language for that would be a medical card authorizing home cultivation of cannabis there. Again, I would just recommend striking all of the extracriminal stuff. I think that the state, the legislature, has done a very good job of covering all of this stuff. And I appreciate, again, the attempt here to protect licensees. However, if you have a patient that comes from Butte County, or, you know, Fall River County, or somewhere out west, we have no idea how they package those things. It's just not real realistic, the way that patients handle their medicine, to have them keep all of the packaging materials. I mean, I don't know, if you bought a matchbox car or anything, like no one really keeps the actual packaging. This, I was careful not to bring a THC pen, because I probably would have gotten arrested here, but, you know, this is what something would look like, this is just a, you know, regular vape pen. This would be, if a patient pulled it out of their pocket, if they had it in their pocket, they'd be under arrest and viable for a class-two misdemeanor under this ordinance. So I would strike that entire criminal section, that'd be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up and speak on this ordinance? All right, if not, I'm going to, well, let me ask, Bill, do you want to address any of the things that Ned brought up?
As a alternative, or possibly being able to do this, if you look at subsection four, they just talked about the packaging. If you eliminated one, two, and three, and just left it for how it has to be packaged or transported, that would at least be the intent and the essence of what we are looking for.
Are you on the criminal?
On the criminal, on the criminal side of the statute.
So you're saying?
It's for number four, under use and possession.
Right.
If we got rid of subsection one, two, and three, and just leave one, so it's a class-two misdemeanor for any person to have packaged a receptacle containing medical marijuana in their possession unless it is labeled and packaged and identified clearly. That section there. Because that's, that's really what we're trying to do, is distinguish between something that was obtained legally and something not obtained legally. The others, motor vehicle and otherwise. We can go ahead and, I mean, there's other statutes, DWIs and other things like that we could address. But that would be a compromise. Otherwise, if you're going to strike it, we'll, we'll take the whole thing out. If you want to keep it, you can keep it. But that one is the one that probably is the
So which one of these addresses, in your opinion, which one of these addresses, like, let's say I'm sitting at a stoplight or a stop sign, and the car in front of me, and there's smoke rolling out the window, and I'm smelling it, and I don't want to smell it. Which one of these addresses that situation? I mean, maybe it's the passenger that's using, I don't know.
Right. It's not allowed to be used in public or in public ways.
Is that considered public?
If they're on the streets, it's public.
In their own car?
In their own car.
Yeah.
Okay. I think there's an argument to be made there.
But we're, we can find arguments for everything. It depends where, if it's, if it's parked on private property, maybe there's an argument that at that point in time, you couldn't do anything, but if it's on a public roadway, you're probably going to get an investigation for driving while intoxicated.
Right.
So you're saying strike two, three, and four, and just keep one?
I'm saying that that would be an option if you were inclined to, if you, if you were concerned about the possession issue. The packaging issue is really what we're trying to address, to distinguish between something that somebody bought from an illegal source versus something that was purchased from a licensed source. That's, and that's what we're trying to get here in the, that's why it's in the licensing section, is we're trying to find some way to, for law enforcement, so they can identify between the two. Because otherwise, you're probably going to always be able to buy illegal marijuana cheaper than you can from a licensed facility. And so the only thing that we could come up with is, from a licensed facility, it should be labeled or marked some way. From an un, you know, from an unlicensed source, we expect it to come from something that's not marked. We usually see it in Ziploc bags, you see it in pill bottles, things along those lines. But I can also understand that somebody may take it out of the bag and put it in something else. But that's what we're trying to get to.
I think this is evolving, and it seems like a work in progress. I, I guess I'd like to see us adopt the changes that have been made thus far, and then if we want to continue to work on these, we certainly can, as far as the criminal part of it, since I guess we haven't really had a lot of exposure to that thus far. Is that a fair statement?
Bill, and Nate, I respect your idea about incarceration, but I really don't find anything wrong with what we have put down on possession. I truly don't. And I think the public deserves as much protection on this as anything, so I'm, I'm very comfortable in leaving this as is. Because I think it defines everything and puts an onerous responsibility on the people that are going to purchase the product, that they have to follow rules and regulations. And that's pretty well spelled out, so I like it the way it is.
And just so that everybody understands, a class-two misdemeanor is a speeding, is the equivalent of a speeding ticket. It is punishable by thirty days in jail and a five-hundred-dollar fine. But typically, these are something that, a ticket is handed out and a fine is issued. It isn't an arrestable offense, or doesn't, normally is an arrestable offense. An individual can turn it into an arrestable offense if they wish to, but normally, it's just going to be a ticket.
Thank you for that.
Madam Chair, if you want to
Yep, I'm in a closed testimony at this time. Any, any further discussion amongst the commissioners?
I mean, I, we can certainly review and go over it. I'm comfortable with this, changes that have been made, that Bill has suggested, and we adopt this ordinance as written. That's my opinion.
Is that a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Shall we call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, thanks, everybody. Move on to item two on our agenda. Employee benefits. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Hold us up here. Well, thanks for having me, it's great to be back during renewal season. I believe you, you received this presentation ahead of time, too, I'll go through it. Obviously, if there are questions, I know you will
Thanks, John.
speak up. All right, so this year, if we can that's a scroll. So this year, working with Sheri and Bill, HR team, for the 2023 benefits renewal season. Just real quick, refresher of who your carriers are. So you are with United Healthcare currently for your medical, but we did market Lincoln County out to other carriers, so Health Partners, who was in here in place of, or prior to United Healthcare. Wellmark, Avare, and Sanford. We did receive proposals from all of those. We're not going to be showing all of them in detail, but we'll, we'll explain why here in a second. Your group dental plan is still with Delta Dental, we received their renewal. Your vision is with iMed, that's under rate guarantee. And your life insurance is with MetLife, and that's a renewal we receive as well, that we'll show that. So getting really right into it with the group health insurance. A high level, again, up in the left corner, United Healthcare is your current carrier. They did come in with an initial renewal of five percent, which in today's environment is actually a very favorable renewal. When we're looking at trend, along with the uncertainty of inflation, really, we're seeing anywhere between eight and three-quarters and the high nines for renewals, or for, for medical trends. So five percent was favorable, as a projected eighty-three thousand dollar increase over current. Now, you will see it says modified design, and we'll get back into this a little bit more when I show some details. But prior to marketing your plans, prior to renewal season, Lincoln County did hold a survey of their employees to see really what they're looking for in their medical insurance, what they're happy with, what they're not happy with. And if you recall, last year, when I was at this, when I was here at this time, the biggest issue was that in-network, or in-office lab and x-ray. We gave some options, we ended up keeping the benefit as is, and that benefit currently states that if you go into the office for a lab or an x-ray, you're not paying a co-pay, you're paying deductible coinsurance. Not a well-received benefit, and the survey points that out as well. So we did ask United Healthcare to change that back to, similar to how you had that with Health Partners two years ago, and that's making it part of that office as a co-pay. They did add that, and you'll see where it says lab x-ray benefit, no change. Now, you also hear, see, where it says HDHP benefit, no change. Now, you also hear, see, where it says HDHP embedded. And I'll go into this a little bit more. The IRS dictates what an embedded plan and a non-embedded plan is every year. It's a certain dollar level. And I'll show this here in a second. But the dollar level that your current high deductible health plan is at, the $2,800 deductible for a single 56 family, would not be embedded in 2023. The minimums go up to a 3.6. So this, this alternate design does increase that deductible for the high deductible health plan, in order to maintain it being an embedded plan. It's a benefit to your employees. So, with that, it actually drops it to 4.81%. We'll show that. You can see, we also went to Avera and Sanford, and you'll see that we received very favorable renewals. 15% decrease from Avera, 6.5% decrease from current, from Sanford. But again, working with Sheri and Bill, the big things with Avera and Sanford are, those are very closed networks. If you were to elect to go with Avera, your population would only be able to see Avera providers, same with Sanford. Knowing where your employees are utilizing healthcare, there would be a disruption either way you go, to a significant population. Wellmark, Open Access, very favorable, 3%. So almost a flat renewal. Again, their renewal also included that lab and x-ray benefit at no charge, and also embeds the HDHP. And then we get the Health Partners. Again, Health Partners was in here prior to United Healthcare. They came in with an 8.86% decrease from current. That does include the lab and x-ray benefit at no charge. It does have an embedded high deductible health plan. And they did include a second-year rate cap of not to exceed 15. I'm not a huge fan of fully insured plans on rate caps. 15% is pretty high, I'd market you anyway. They did say, it's a potential to reduce to 12% for the second year. And what that potential means is, you would tell Health Partners, we're not going to market you in the second year. Now, that doesn't mean you're automatically going to get the 15 or the 12. It's just your renewal can't exceed that. We also came up with an alternate plan designed under Health Partners. Now, I'll show why we, we came up with that here in a few slides. But what that does is, it keeps those benefits we talked about, the, the no charge on the in-office lab and x-ray. It embeds that high deductible health plan, but it also lowers the deductibles on the copay plan, where most of your constituents are at. Okay? So when we look at the renewal with United Healthcare, again, we mentioned it's a 5% increase over current. Now, this is before contributions, this is the projected total. And as I mentioned each year, we have to take a snapshot in time. So we're looking at your current enrollment, and making an assumption, if those enrollments were to stay the same, and in the same plans, that 5% increase, with no benefits, I'm sorry, with the lab and x-ray, no, no charge, equates to about an $83,000 increase. We showed that. Here's that alternate, which talks about the embedded high deductible health plan. So it moves that high deductible from 2,856 deductible to a 3.6. Again, lab and x-ray at no charge at 4.81. And that's what I'm going to show you next, is if that 4.81 was adopted, if you remained with United Healthcare, what it would look like. So on the left here, in the blue, is 2022. In the right, in the orange, is 2023. So if we pass along that overall 4.81, in the yellow are the current employee monthly contributions. So, for example, a single would go from 248 to 260. Single plus spouse, 595, 28 to 62504. To the far right is what those increases per month would be. A single would be going up 1240, all the way to a family 4217. So, again, in today's benefits world, a 5% is a favorable renewal. But as you saw, we can do better. The high deductible health plan, little bit less increase, they'd be getting a 3.82. And you can see where their contributions would go up from, 715 to 2432. Down here, circled, again, making that assumption that enrollment stays the same, plan, elections stay the same, it would be projected to be a 4.81% increase to the county, or 57,718. Okay? Then we get to the Health Partners. These are the plans that, working with Bill and Sheri, are being recommended. There are two options here. And option one is right here, the first green line. And that's with the Health Partners proposal, that does move that in-office lab and x-ray back to no charge. It does increase that deductible on the high deductible health plan to 3.6, to maintain it being an embedded plan. And again, there you see the 8.86. The alternate, as you see here, lowering the deductible. So actually taking the plan where a majority of your employees are at, lowering it from 1,000, 2,000, to a 75015. And doing that, it's still a savings, not quite as big as the 8.86, but an 8.26. So we'll carry both of those plans over, but let's look at the, the plan design real quick. You'll see there's not a lot of changes, changes being a different color. This is your copay plan, the traditional copay plan, where the majority of your employees are at. No change to deductibles in this option. You will see one difference is, with United Healthcare, for specialty visits, it's $50 copay if you use one of their designated, it's 100 if you use the rest of the network. With Health Partners, it's 50 regardless. And then down here, the big one, is the diagnostic test and lab and x-ray at a no charge. You also see that Health Partners, every carrier has different prescription formulary plans. You'll see it's fairly similar, with the generics being $10, 25 for tier two, tier three 50. You'll see that they also have a brand non-formulary, which is 50, and then the specialty medications. On the HDHP plan, the change will be, as I mentioned, going from a 2,856 single, which is not embedded in 2023, to a 3.6. Okay? That's the only change that will be made on the high deductible health plan. In doing that option, the other thing that you'll see that's going to be changed on this, is the employee contribution percentage. So the recommendation from the HR team, based on not only the savings, but the, the survey results that were received. Overwhelmingly, the two things that stood out in that survey was the lab and x-ray deduct, being a deductible co-insurance, and the cost of the plan. Okay? So what this does is, take it from a flat 28% across the board, employee, 72 Lincoln County, to a 2,476 for single, and 2,575 for the rest of the tiers. You can see by doing that, with the savings with Health Partners, it's significant savings on this option to the employees. A single in this option would save almost $56 per month, up to a family of $163. The high deductible health plan, be saving 34, all the way to 94. And to the county, again, making that assumption, everything stays the same, a savings of $56,000. Now, we saw that United Healthcare renewal was a potential cost of 56. This would be a savings of 56. Every year, I like to show, and this will lead into that alternate plan design, really where costs are at. And even though you're a fully insured plan, not paying claims, it's important to know where your claim dollars are coming from. When we look at the plan, year over year, there's no surprise that we see, the majority of your claims, 77% in 2021, 82% in 2022, come from a minority of the population. Now, we're not here to, to punish them, or, or say that's bad. But it's important to know, when you're making plan design changes, that you're making ones that make sense. That we're making the plan fair and equitable across the entire population. Having low deduct, or low out-of-pockets means higher premiums, which majority of your employees don't hit. So in looking at that, this is plan cost. One, one piece of debt I was just able to get late yesterday, so I didn't have it in here, are what your employees are paying, your members are paying out-of-pocket. Now, not the premiums, copays, co-insurance, deductibles. In 2021, 55% of your covered members spent less than $1,000 in copays, co-insurance deductibles. 75% spent less than 2,000. Now, in prior years, that actually is a little bit higher. The reason why we saw that dip a little bit, we usually see it in about the 80% to 85% range of people spending less than 2,000 on your plan. The reason why we saw it go up a little bit over the last two years, lab and x-ray. People went from paying a copay, to now paying more out-of-pocket for those procedures. Okay? So knowing that, we have an opportunity. You have very decent out-of-pocket maxims. We don't want to touch that. But you have the option to lower that deductible on the copay plan. Survey shows that people aren't taking the, that aren't taking the plan, aren't taking it because it's too expensive, and the plan doesn't meet their needs. It's the plan design. Right? So we know that that's an issue. So by changing, lowering that to 750, still keeping that lab and x-ray in-office at no charge, and keeping that HDHP plan embedded, it's a slightly less decrease, but still a significant decrease to both the county and employees. So in this option, an employee is going from 24803 to 19362. A savings of $54. Family saving 157. The high deductible health plan, those numbers are the same, because we're not making any changes there. Projected savings of $50,000 to the county. Again, this option also shows the recommended change in the employee employer cost share of a 2,476, and a 2,575.
Sean, would the employee... Sorry. Would, would the employee be choosing, if we went with Health Partners, would they be choosing one plan or the other?
Yes. So they would have the choice, just like in the last couple of years, of the copay plan?
Sure.
Or the high deductible health plan. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
With the lower premium, what's their deductible?
On, so on this option here, the 750 for the copay plan, 750 single, $1,500 family, which is lower from 1,000, 2,000.
Okay.
The high deductible plan stays the same.
All right.
As it stays. Yep.
But there, on that plan, their monthly payments go down 50-some dollars?
Yep, 5,441 for a single, all the way to 15762 for a family.
So over 12 months, that's a...
Significant savings.
It is some money.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And this covers all the deficiencies we've heard about.
Yeah. You know, the, the biggest thing over the last couple of years, you know, we do know that Health Partners was a carrier that your employees liked. If we go back two years ago, when we made the choice to move to United Healthcare, it was a dollar and cents. It wasn't a service issue, it was a dollars and cents issue. Right? So, I did look at your reports, and you are starting, you being Lincoln County, are starting to trend more favorably. When we look at what's called the loss ratio, that's one of the first dynamics we look at in a fully insured. Last year, your plan ended at a 75% loss ratio. They paid out less than they took in for, uh, claims, they took in for money. This year, you're trending at a 77. Those are favorable. That's what led to this marketing, right? The, the market sees you as favorable. If we continue that, we might have further discussions about different options going forward. But that's what's, that's what we're looking at. And by having that opportunity with this savings, fills, fixes those deficiencies that we heard from your, your employees.
So if our loss ratio continues to decline, we can expect lower rates?
Absolutely. That's, on a fully insured plan, that's what drives it. Getting way ahead of ourselves, if we would continue to see loss ratios like that, even for a size like you, you even talk about self-funding, or minimum premium funding. Again, taking advantage of those savings. But that's down the road.
So this may wander a little bit off there, but if the county would come up with a health plan, or for, you know, that they would want to exercise more, follow certain rules and regulations, and things like that, that there's a potential that not only would we improve the health of our employees, but we would also help them lower their insurance costs?
Absolutely. It, it's, it goes hand in hand, right? The, the healthier the population, in, in essence, really, smaller population, but the healthier the population, the lower the risk, the lower the risk, the lower the premiums. Now, as a fully insured plan, and your size, it's very important to know that you're not 100% credible. I can't take that loss ratio and say, every carrier, give me low rates, because that's credible. You're just not. You're going to be blended with whatever carrier you're with, with their community, with their book of business. So there are options in time, or there are possibilities in time, where you could have a very favorable year, but the carrier you're with has a horrible year, and that offsets the, the, how good of a renewal you could get. But again, that's when, then when you look at marketing, that's what our job is to do, to help mitigate that as well. Yep.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
We are opening, do you have, is there, do you have more to your presentation?
Yeah, so I can go through, so that's, that's the medical. The rest are pretty quick. So dental insurance, as I mentioned, there is a slight increase this year, it's 2%. You haven't really had an increase. Just a reminder, you do have a few programs under that with Delta Dental, Prevention Pays, Health Through Oral Wellness, and a maximum bonus account, which allows carryover. So it's a slight 2% increase, and if, how that looks to the employee, because it's a 100% employee-paid plan, 92, or 90 cents, 92 cents increase, up to 284, that's monthly. Vision is staying the same, there are no, you're under rate guarantee through next year, so there's no cost change to employees there. Your life insurance, this is the life insurance that's provided by Lincoln County to eligible employees. There actually was an increase of 11%. We were able to get to that down, even though it's a small dollar amount. We don't like double-digit percentages. So it's a 5.26% increase, which is a projected $214 increase to the county for the life insurance. So, how this ends up, is there's two slides here. This slide shows the projected financial for 2023 for total, for the staff, and for the county. This slide here looks at United Healthcare, retaining them. I'll look down here at the bottom, the county costs. So again, based on current projections, the county's going to spend about 1.2 million in medical, 4,700 in base life, for 1.2 million. With the alternate UHC, that's that 4.81, that's no copay, or I'm sorry, no deductible co-insurance on the lab and x-ray, and the embedded plan, 1.25 million, 4,900 on life. So about that 4.1% increase. Second page is the Health Partners. And really, there's, there's two main options that are being recommended, or put up for, for recommendations. The, the Health Partners here, this line here, 1.14 million, that leads to a $56,000 projected savings to the county. This is the one that's keeping the plan as is, with the exception of moving lab and x-ray to no charge in office, and then also embedded that high deductible health plan. The one below that, the alternate HP, that one is lowering, that's the two enhancements that I mentioned, but also lowering the deductible on the copay plan, again, a projected $49,000 savings to the county.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Sean?
Does this cover the concerns some of our staff had last year with checkups, with digital evaluations and so forth?
Yeah. You know, so, we had 78 respondents to the survey. I'll just give you real quick. Of those 78, 58 were enrolled in the medical plan. So, a little more than half, obviously we like to see them all. But pretty much overwhelming, again, the two things were the lab and x-ray. And we knew that from last year, that was brought up last year as well. The survey just really furthered that, right? So having that in-office lab and x-ray, and I want to make, be clear, we're not talking about MRIs, pets, or CAT scans. This is in-office labs, in-office x-rays. Moving it back to being part of that office visit copay, similar how it was two years ago with Health Partners. So that was number one. Number two is the premiums. And again, that was, not only by the, the 58 that were enrolled, but by the 20 that waived it as well. You know, we asked, why did you waive it? Do you have spousal coverage? What is it? And it was, the cost is too high, and the plan design, plan design leaning to deductibles. So by lowering the cost, that, you know, changing that employee employer split, definitely made it more, or, or more affordable to the employees, saving them quite a bit from current. And then also, that plan design, meeting those, those design concerns that they were, that they raised during the survey, and again, last year as well.
So you would need us to decide, though, between health, if we went Health Partners, between, want, want the first option or the second option?
Yeah. The, the, when working with Bill and Sheri, the recommended plan would be that alternate.
Okay. That's what, that was my question.
Yep, with lowering that copay. Exactly.
All right. All right. So this is the first meeting. We're having public input on our agenda items. So if there's anybody in the public that wants to come up on this agenda item, feel free to do so now. You'll have three minutes. Anybody? All right. If there's no takers, I'm going to consider a motion.
Well, it looks to me like the recommendation was the alternative plan.
Correct.
That is the route we should follow.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
All right. Thank you. Sean McCullar, please.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. Thanks for Sean. Up, Sean.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda, item three, report on the regional wastewater study. Commissioner Gibbon, are you handling that? Or, I thought Jesse's here, I see. Are you speaking on that?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Jesse Fonker, presidency of the Sumitra Growth Alliance, 196 E6 Street, Suite 200 in Sioux Falls. I had the pleasure of introducing our speakers today with ISG. ISG is going to speak on the study results and talk about that with you. I'm just going to start off with just a brief background of the process, how we got to this point. We approached the city of Canton and the city of Worthing to discuss what their needs are long-term on regional wastewater. Around wastewater, we know that wastewater is a big concern in economic development. Everybody needs wastewater, water and wastewater, gas, power, these important concepts, important utilities that we need to have in place to have growth happen. So we started a process earlier in 2022, where we got folks together, including several commissioners from Lincoln County, to talk about what the future is for the region. And it resulted in ISG being selected to perform a feasibility study on what a regional wastewater system could look like. And so, what we're talking to you today is about a concept. Nothing is in stone. We're trying to find a way to make this concept work with our partners. And so what we're talking to you today is about a concept. Nothing is in stone. We're trying to find a way to make this concept work with our partners across the region. There's some sites that are proposed in this presentation that are not cemented sites, just conceptual sites. I've heard a few phone, I've received a few phone calls from landowners across the region that are concerned about this concept. And so I just want to state that here publicly, that we've receiving these concerns, and we're just trying to, through this process, find a way to get folks to consider working together to help solve a regional issue. So with that, I'm going to invite Steve Watson and Rachel Close with ISG to come up here and talk to you about this. And I'll be available at the end of the presentation to take any questions you might have about this as well. We would also not be remiss if we didn't thank Xcel Energy for helping, helping pay for the study through a grant. The taxpayers of Canton, the taxpayers of Worthing helped fund the study as well, and it's been truly a cooperative effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Steve Watson. I'm a Development Strategist with ISG. And Rachel Close, who's going to be joining me here in a sec, is a water, wastewater group leader for our firm, and is the principal author of the study that you all should have received electronically. I also have hard copies. If you are so inclined, just let me know. So when we get down to the bottom of this, this is really about growth, and not just any growth, but strategic growth. And as you all are very well aware, the Sioux Falls MSA continues to grow significantly, and the communities of Worthing and Canton are trying to figure out how they can maybe capture more of that growth in their respective communities and in the region. And as you all are very familiar, infrastructure is, is really important to facilitating growth, how and where. And so the focus of our analysis was strictly on wastewater. We do, we did make some observations on water, which we'll get to a little bit later, but our focus was on wastewater and how that could be used to drive additional development in the area. As Jesse mentioned, we looked at the city of Worthing, their future needs, the city of Canton. And then we also took into consideration what type of growth prospects might exist in this Highway eighteen growth corridor off of Interstate twenty-nine. This, this slide really sums up the why behind the study. I mentioned not just any growth, but strategic growth, looking at residential growth, but also commercial and industrial development opportunities, which we think this region's poised for a lot more of that, with the right assets in place. It's also about current and future environmental compliance. And so a lot of communities in the state are going to be forced to make upgrades to their current wastewater treatment facilities because of new or expanded environmental regulations. Our firm does a lot of work in Wisconsin and Iowa. We've seen some of these environmental compliance requirements coming down the pike. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And so all of the communities in the region, in the next three, four, five, ten years, are going to have to make pretty significant investments in their wastewater systems to, to stay compliant. So now's a really good time to be thinking about, you know, what those might be and to plan for it. And then lastly, as you all are familiar, we're in a really unprecedented situation with funding that's become available to the state, specifically for water and wastewater projects. As you all are aware, you've also received some ARPA dollars that could be used for a variety of different uses. And so we think now is a good time to be engaging some of the financial partners to see what's possible. I should also mention that the South Dakota Department of Ag and Natural Resources has been encouraging communities to consider wastewater regionalization. So not only do they have the funding, but they also have an initiative that they've been pushing the last, the last year. Rachel?
Good morning. So when we first started putting together this study, we wanted to make sure that we also looked backwards. A regionalization study for Lincoln County is done in the past at least two times that I could find. Those previous studies are included in the packet.
Would you hand me one of those?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes.
So I think it's really important as we look at some of this economic growth and look at that regionalization, that we also look backwards and, and try to understand what previous studies look like, what our growth looks like, what our projections look like. We learn a lot from, from previous studies and previous reports. So we took into account all of that as we're, as we're looking through the study. We wanted to make sure that we fully encompassed both the future growth, but by looking back in the past as well. So the first thing that we started with, I'm just going to go to the next page here, is looking at our growth component. And strategic growth is a key component of the regionalization study. As you guys know, Lincoln County, as well as the entire MSA, Sioux Falls MSA, has started to grow exponentially. We want to make sure that we're projecting that growth appropriately. So we took into some key components. We looked at, first of all, our current population. We looked at average annual growth. So as a wastewater engineer, when I start looking at developing and designing a system, it's pretty easy for me to look back on simple year growth trend for the last ten, fifteen, twenty years. That's a really easy answer. Now, as we know, that that's not always sometimes the case that we'll project what our future growth is going to be. So we not only looked at our ten-year census average for both Canton, Worthing, and then for the Lincoln County area, but we also took into account the comprehensive growth plans. These comprehensive, comprehensive growth plans for both the communities Canton, Worthing, and for Lincoln County are essential in helping to us to project not only what the economic growth was projected to be, but we want to make sure that the plan put in place is synergistic with what the community comprehensive plan looks like. So we looked at those plans as well and took those into account for growth. And as you can see from the slide here, that there's a change, right? There's a difference between what we're actually seeing for growth, what we project to see for growth, and what our comprehensive plans look like. So from there, we decided, and I love scenarios when we put down, I love to have options in the reports that I write. So we put different scenarios down, and this goes back to taking all of that data to understand and project what our growth is going to be, which is really essential to how we see wastewater coming into our economic opportunity. So we put together four different scenarios. The low-growth scenario included a growth percentage of one and one and a half percent for both the communities of Canton and Worthing. That growth percentage also took into account light industrial and commercial growth, both in those communities, and also accounted for some additional industrial growth in the, in the regionalization area. Scenario two, again, looked at that medium annual growth. Again, we're getting a little bit more projected. We took into account the information that we've seen from Harrisburg, from T, from other surrounding communities, and looked at that growth percentage, as well as took into account the comprehensive plan information at two and four percent. And then finally, really aiming for the stars, really projecting the fact that as we see both Minnehaha County and Lincoln County moving, we see projected and outside growth, people moving into the Lincoln County area. So looked at that high-growth scenario. And then finally, we took that medium-growth approach and said, hey, we're going to be really systematic on this and not look at in, large industrial growth, take into account some small industrial growth in those communities. So again, just a couple of different ways that we looked at growth throughout the component. The other key component that we looked at as we went through this study was the environmental impact. It is essential that we are not only exceeding the environmental expectations of today for both all of our wastewater components, but also looking into the future. We need to make sure that we're protecting our natural, natural wildlife and resources. So we looked at a couple of different scenarios for regionalization wastewater. As you guys are probably aware, both Canton and Worthing operate lagoon systems. It is, again, mother nature's way of treating wastewater. It does take up a lot of space. And unfortunately, because of our cold weather, and because of our increasing population, struggles with maintaining some of the more strict wastewater limits that we're continuing to see. One in particular is that ammonia. Ammonia does break down with bacteria, but it is limited, especially during cold water. And a lagoon system without some assistance struggles to meet those ammonia clarifications. So we not only looked at the technology that we would need to meet those current, future, and expected environmental compliance, but we also looked at three separate, different scenarios for discharging. And just like Jesse mentioned, these are conceptual. Every one of these concepts were vetted with the, with Dana, as well as looking at different components on those, on those things. And in those things, we looked at scenario one, which would be a discharge into Snake Creek. This is the current discharge in which Worthing discharges their controlled discharge lagoons. The wasteload allocations or the volumes that are permitted right now would not change. Those are the, the difference. Worthing right now discharges once or twice a year on a controlled discharge. This would be more of a continuous discharge, so a lower percent, a lower volume over, on a daily basis versus a higher volume a couple of times a year. But looking at the Snake Creek discharge, which would ultimately, we looked at wasteload allocations, environmental impact, and permitting components. The second component we looked at was the Big Sioux River. The Big Sioux River is where Canton currently discharges their wastewater that is right on the Iowa border, and so it does impact how we would interact with both South Dakota and Iowa Department of Natural Resources. So both of those would have to be accounted in those, in that scenario. But all very viable scenario for discharging into both Snake Creek and the Big Sioux River. And then as an alternative scenario, we looked at Beaver Creek. Beaver Creek runs into the Big Sioux River, runs north of Canton, Canton into the Big Sioux. And we looked at that just scenario, just as an opportunity. It had been viewed in a couple of different scenarios in the past. We did look at that component. There are currently no wasteload allocations available in Beaver Creek for a point source discharge or for wastewater treatment. We could petition and get those accomplished if we want, but when we started looking at infrastructure and flow rates, it became cost ineffective to look at that scenario. So although it was reviewed in the study, it was eliminated as a viable option. So again, we looked at beneficial use classification of the streams, the total maximal daily limits of the impaired streams, and the state water quality standards for looking at all those discharge opportunities for potential regionalization area. So scenario one, as we pulled through the regionalization, would be to caption, and you'll notice here that option one is the wastewater treatment plant would be located somewhere on the Highway eighteen south of Worthing corridor. We would then collect wastewater from the city of Canton and bring it over to the wastewater plant, as well as collect from the city of Worthing. This allows a really centralized growth, specifically for that I twenty-nine corridor and for economic growth, really centralized area to start looking at growth on, for systems. Like Steve and Jesse both mentioned earlier, that wastewater component really adds that economic growth in that particular area. The Highway eighteen, I twenty-nine corridor is a very economic viable because of its vicinity to Sioux Falls, as well as the interstate. It's got viable natural gas and electricity and water availability, so it's, it's a good site for growth as well. This site would include a controlled discharge to the Snake Creek, which would ultimately run into Long Creek. And just to reiterate, I know there's been some concerns about all of the hydrology studies would be needed to be. I mean, this is all preliminary at this point, but we would need to do hydrology studies to make sure that there's no negative impact on land south of this facility. So that's one scenario that we pulled through. The second scenario is pretty much just a mirror image of that, would be the wastewater treatment plant would be located in the Canton area. We would discharge to the Big Sioux River, very similar to where we have right now. Those wasteload allocations are, again, available because Canton has them right now. And then we would bring over the wastewater from Worthing over to Canton to that regionalization component. This does limit, as far as infrastructure costs, especially if we wanted to do some of that economic growth on Highway eighteen. There's, there's a little bit more cost associated with that. So just a little bit scenario on that one. When we pulled these costs together, again, these are high-level scenarios, but we looked at a couple of different growth scenarios. And I've highlighted one, just as you use as an example, which is three C, or one C. Again, being really bullish on that growth percentage, we said, hey, we're going to assume that we've got that really high growth. We want to be really bullish on that. And we want to account for that industrial component, some multiple or industrial allocation component in there. So that would be a wastewater treatment plan of roughly one point nine four million gallons per day, discharging permitted to Snake Creek at a Worthing capital cost of a little over five million dollars. At Canton, capital investment of over twen, twelve million, and you can see the difference because a lot of that is the infrastructure to get the wastewater over from Canton over to the Worthing area. And then roughly an eleven million dollar capital investment from that industrial park component. And all of this system is modular, so you don't have to pick one or the other. You can do those in steps for a total project capital investment of roughly twenty-eight million dollars. And again, we put multiple different scenarios, again, together to do a review. It's important to realize that in the near future, both Worthing and Canton will have to make some improvements to the wastewater treatment and their own facilities. So treatment for ammonia, nitrogen, phosphorus, those are the things that we're looking at in the near future. So we're, we're probably talking in that five to ten million dollars per community component to, to meet those expectations. And then also, in a sense, taking into account some additional growth that goes along in that. So just to kind of, as a comparison, going through that.
So both the city of Worthing and Canton asked us to just explore different funding options that were available out there. And in the packet, we highlight a number of different options. But the, the two that are probably the most significant and impactful include the state revolving fund, SRF Fund, if you're familiar with that, through D A and R. That would be applicable in this instance, low-interest loans. They do have the ability to provide loan forgiveness or direct grants. They're not significant. Typically, they're, they don't exceed more than ten percent of the total project, but that is an avenue that we would encourage them to pursue if they want to keep moving forward. And then both D A and R in Lincoln County, for example, have received some ARPA dollars. And you may have already in Lincoln County allocated those funds and have plans for them, but we did flag that as a potential for them to consider. So just kind of wrapping this up, as far as next steps, you know, we've encouraged the communities to continue to evaluate the prospect of a mechanical regional facility that would be located in one of those two locations that Rachel had identified. We do think that they should compare the findings of this study versus their own independent analysis of what improvements they need to make in their respective communities. We do think that, we, we're calling this a regional wastewater project, so they should maybe engage the cities of Lenox and, and quite possibly Harrisburg, who's already made a pretty substantial investment in a new facility. Perhaps there's an opportunity to partner with the city of Harrisburg on this. And then, you know, if the communities decide that they want to move forward with, with more analysis, we think one of the very next steps is to engage the state more formally to understand what financial assistance may be available there. We did a very similar project in Hartford, South Dakota. And we've designed their plant in such a way that it can be expanded for both regionalization and/or industrial growth. And the state of South Dakota looked very favorably upon that application and provided a pretty substantial grant with the hopes that it would facilitate the type of growth that we've addressed here today. And so we think it's at least worth a conversation if they want to continue to move forward. We, just so your knowledge, we, we did have a very similar presentation that we gave to both the city councils of Worthing and Canton in the last few weeks. And they're digesting that and determining what they want to do next. And then the last piece, you know, we didn't specifically look at water, but as you, as you could assume, water and wastewater are pretty closely tied at the hip. And we think that both the cities of Worthing and Canton, and probably others in, in the county, need to be thinking strategically about getting additional water allocations. We've seen some communities in the region that are constrained from a water perspective, and they're losing out on commercial and industrial opportunities because of that. And so we did want to make sure we flagged that for our clients. So with that, that's the conclusion of our presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any Commissioners have any questions for Steve or Rachel?
I think for those that are probably here in attendance, obviously, they kind of want to know a type of figure, dollar amount that we're dealing with upfront, prior to any funds that might be available, you know, through ARPA and South Dakota D A and N R and so forth. so forth. And I know it's different with each one of these, regardless if it's Beaver Creek to the Big Sioux, or Snake Creek, or whatever. Is there a dollar amount that you could give the public here today?
So we believe that this facility will be between $20 and $28 million, all in. That includes not only the actual facility, but all the conveyance to connect the communities. And I would say that we're probably pretty conservative with those numbers, and there's contingencies on, on top of contingencies with that. We really need to take the next step and do a more in-depth analysis with those cities to hone in on those numbers, but we think that that's, that's probably a pretty reasonable.
What, I know it's apples maybe and oranges, what percent of the funding which was done, I believe, and you made mention of Hartford was eventually through these types of funds?
Yes, sir, good question. So the city of Hartford's wastewater treatment plant is estimated at about $16 million, and the state of South Dakota provided roughly $8 million in grants in the balances, low-interest loans. And the respective communities that were part of that analysis, Crooks, Colton, Lyons, and Humboldt have formally engaged Minnehaha County, and will be re-engaging the state to talk about what additional assistance may be available for the conveyance costs.
Will you be moving forward with that next step, or what's, what's the plan going forward?
With respect to Lincoln County?
Correct.
So the intent, following this presentation, is to go back to each of those communities and determine if they want to continue to move forward. We think that the next appropriate conversation is, is to formally engage the State Department of Ag and Natural Resources to explore if it's possible for us to get on the state water board and be considered for prospective funding after the first of the year.
All right, thank you.
I think you made mention Beaver Creek to the Big Sioux River, that the costs were much higher, and why is that?
Yeah, part of it was just the location of where the discharge would be and where the plant would be. That allowed for more infrastructure to get to that area, so it just became a little bit more cost inhibitive on that end. Certainly can still be reviewed. Another keynote on Beaver Creek is when any wastewater permit, a permit for wastewater is considered a point source, and there are no allocations for point sources on Beaver Creek, and that's all the allocations for any water going into Beaver Creek are considered non-point, so ag drainage, those type of things, so we would have to petition. It can be petitioned to get that, but it just becomes a little bit more, more opportunity. I will note that that $28 million allocation or component did include a very large industrial allocation, and again, that's just a really wide way to get started, to kind of pull that together, so that allocation would not be put on to the citizens of both Canton or Worthing. And we did do some projections in our book, we did do some projections on individual service rate increases based on grant availability and low, and low-interest loans, so kind of made some estimates, real high-level estimates, on the capital investment for both the city of Canton and Worthing, as well as what that potential service charge would be on those individual taxpayers.
Thank you.
You, can I have one more question?
Yep, go ahead.
You, you made a comment that Worthing discharges once or twice a year, but under this plan, the discharge would be more often, but it would be decreased in volume?
Yeah, yeah, so, so we, yeah, so the controlled discharge lagoon is a really traditional way that we're treating wastewater in this, in the state of South Dakota. You have large amount of volume, you have to have a minimum per the state of 180 days of storage on-site, so that's why you see those large volumes of lagoons. That allows us not only the time for the treatment of the biologicals, but again, it's, so then on a once or twice basis, usually with permission from the Department of Ag, then we release water to their discharge point, a couple types here, that's a controlled discharge. A mechanical plant would be a much smaller footprint, we don't have to have the lagoons, we're going to be treating or with a mechanical component. It's, it's now, we're going to constrict that component, we're a lot more effective at treatment, and we don't need those large lagoons, so we don't need that 180 days of storage. But that treatment would be continuous, it would be happening every day, so we would have a continuous flow coming out of the plant at all times, which is traditional in a mechanical type system.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come up and speak on this item?
Marlene Sweeter, 47158, 283rd Street, Worthing. I am just here to say that it was quite frightening to me to see this presentation and to see that they were going to discharge into Snake Creek. There had been no conversation with anyone along that creek, and we all know that's a drainage nightmare. I, I did talk to Jesse, he was very, I enjoyed visiting with Jesse, he was very willing to listen, but I think that that is by no means an option to dispense that much, all that extra wastewater into Snake Creek. It's not capable of handling that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, and we're not taking any action on that, so thanks, folks, for coming in and sharing your presentation with us today.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, commissioners, we appreciate your time, and we look forward to continuing this conversation with the elected officials in Lincoln County about this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our item, next item on our agenda, item four. Come on up, John.
Good morning, commissioners. So my first item is moving forward with water design for the 4H project. We had some preliminary work by IMAG last year, but now we kind of bounced around, we thought we were going to do the water supply from the city of Lenox, then now we are coming with the understanding we're going to do that with South Lincoln County. So meeting with them, some of that preliminary work was not adequate for what we needed to move forward with the project, so I'd like to, to work with, what is it, DGR, make sure I term right, yeah, DGR Engineering, and get that work also in place, the planning and design work.
Right, so just not ready to do anything today?
No, I, I am ready.
You are?
I would like to move forward and sign that contract with DGR to do the work, and to include also the septic system.
John, the, can I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would, it looks like we're talking of costs of about $6,000, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And it would be billed out as the work's done. I'm not totally sure we'll move forward with all the septic design yet, but we might move forward and at least get the design work done on that also this year. And it is money I have budgeted for this year, so.
We did, we did line item budget for.
Yep.
Madam Chair, I would move that we allow John to proceed with his bid from.
DGR Engineering.
DGR, to study the water situation analysis for the 4H grounds.
Well, actually lay the design work out and have the commission, the board, Commissioner Landy and sign it.
The motion I'm asking for is to approve and sign the proposal for the water and septic system design from DGR Engineering.
That's my motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Seanne Colerole.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is a board action to authorize an advertisement requesting sealed bids for the electric installation at the 4H shower building, or show ring building. Typo.
What, does it say shower?
I don't know, show ring, showering. Anyway, go ahead, John.
So the exciting news is we, Xcel Energy has power to the site. We have a transformer that was put in Friday, and we actually have power to the building, finally, but now we got to get the building wired. I was kind of hoping to be doing this way back in August, but it's kind of gotten delayed over and over, but here we are, so I would like to move forward and get bids and try to still get that completed yet this year as well.
All right.
Did you get input from, from the 4H people, I mean, what they would like to see as well?
Correct, I did.
Okay, all right.
And it's, it's a heavy spec, because that's, again, a hybrid building, it's on a ground, but it's a commercial building, because it holds people, so it's meeting the commercial guidelines that we need to meet.
All right, I'm getting, this is the first time I'm doing this, so I did not get in public input on the last item. So if anybody wants to come up and address the water, water and septic system design proposal, just to approve that, and then if anybody wants to come up on this advertising for sealed bids on the electrical installation, now would be the time to do so. All right, no harm, no foul, right? Go ahead and consider a motion on item five.
Yes, I'll so move, Madam Chair, to advertise requesting sealed bids for the electrical installation of the new 4H show ring building.
All right.
Second.
Thank you, Seanne Colerole.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Mr. Golden, you've got item six.
It's a relief request.
We go ahead and contract with Minnehaha County for their social work services with Ray Cohn. He normally presents for you, I told him I would on this case. This is an individual who applied for assistance from the county with his medical bills. Mr. Cohn went ahead and ran the typical formula in this case. The individual is between jobs, didn't have insurance at the time, doesn't have the income in order to cover the medical bills. The total bill was $1,700. The county's portion of that would be $568.62, and so he is recommending that the county go ahead and pay that poor relief since it meets the requirements within the statute. So that's the request.
All right, thank you. Is there any public input on this item? All right, if not, any discussion amongst the commission?
Madam Chair, I move for approval.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Seanne Colerole.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. And it looks like items seven, eight, and nine on our agenda are for executive session. That, those items may take some time, fair statement, Mr. Golden.
Yes.
So I'm going to take those a little out of order, even though they're, the way they're listed, and open this time up for our opportunity for public comment, so folks aren't sitting around waiting for that, and then I'll also handle commissioner reports prior to those executive session agenda items. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to come up for a public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Lynda Montgomery from Fairview, South Dakota. I am here again for, of course, the CVRs and regarding election integrity. I, right now, there are 18-plus counties that have people like me standing before people like you, to try to get you to listen. We're trusting the ESNS system that, for the tabulating machines, and this is a company, and I have been actively researching this company, and it does not fully disclose who they are, who owns it, and it, it just is not something I feel, on doing my research, I would trust. The, I know that you have been told by your state association for county commissions to advise rejecting hand counting, but because in this county, we have a lawsuit pending regarding the CDC.
Ma'am, now that you bring up the lawsuit, I'm going to stop you there. You would agree there's anticipated or pending litigation on this issue, correct?
Okay, I can leave that out.
Is that correct, ma'am?
Yes, well, I don't know, excuse me, I'm not a lawyer.
Okay, so I'm not going to allow public comment on pending or anticipated litigation items?
Okay, I'll leave that out. The, the other thing is that, but it is true that the South Dakota Association of County Commissions is requested to reject patients, or patients, I was in the medical field too long, request you reject hand counting. I am asking you that we do hand counting for this next election. The Secretary of State also sent out emails to deny, to auditors, county auditors, of how to deny public records requests and reminding them of record destruction dates. The voter rolls are a mess, and I think we really need to look at this. We have bought voter rolls from the Secretary of State going back all the way to the 2020 election, and we are finding currently that people are being added to the 11-3 2020 voter rolls. Those all can be proved, and what I, I had talked, I hadn't talked, I got a nice email when I asked for a public hearing that Sean said I needed to have a county commissioner to back that, and I request a, a public hearing on voter integrity, and I, I asked that commissioner let me know that they would sign on to that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have any public comment they'd like to make at this time? Chad, you've been sitting back there, anything? All right, all right. I'm going to move on to commissioner reports here before we go into executive session. I did receive a letter, and I'm not going to read the entirety of the letter, it will be at some point put on the agenda and made public, it is public since I'm going to discuss it, and we received it from the Second Judicial Circuit. Essentially, our commission room is going to start being used as a courtroom in the near future because of our constricted courtroom space. We're, the contract with Minnehaha County for courtroom space is at end, at the end of this year, and so we've been notified that this commissioner space is most suitable to be converted into a courtroom, and so we'll be looking kind of on a short, possibly emergency basis on whether the space, need, how quickly we can get this space converted to meet our needs. The court brought to my attention that in Minnehaha County, over 1,000 cases had been handled in Minnehaha County, which were assigned to be Lincoln County cases to be handled here, that we couldn't hold, so just want to bring that to everybody's attention. Thank you. And any other commissioners have reports they'd like to make this morning?
Just, just for the record, Madam Chair, yesterday, Commissioner Gibbon and I attended the ribbon cutting for the new Boynton Street that goes into the city of Lenox, which will be a tremendous asset to that community as it continues to grow. Interesting thing that I, I want to check with our auditor, in previously, we have given money both to T and to Harrisburg for their transportation and entry into the city, but the city of Lenox has not received anything, and I think that's commendable to them, that they found a way in which to do that themselves without the taxpayers of Lincoln County having to pay for some of that, so my hats are off to them.
All right, thank you for that report. Also like to remind the public that the courthouse expansion meetings are still taking place. There's one tonight at Liberty Elementary School in Harrisburg, and that starts at 6:00 and runs till 7:30. If you can stop in at any point during that hour and a half and chat with commissioners and others with the judicial system, that would be great, and welcome everybody the opportunity to do that. Any other reports? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, on October 13th, over in Harrisburg, Commissioner Erns and I attended the Lincoln County Highway 106, 271st Street corridor study. It was a well-attended, I know Terry Floyd was in attendance as well, and I know that they are taking public comments until. And I know that they are taking public comments until October 31st. They'd like to hear from us. When I say us, the citizens in that area that will be affected. And of course, when this is done, this is going to be a nice addition to the northern part of Lincoln County and eventually, of course, to Minnehaha County as well. So just input there. If anyone would like to make suggestions, they would like to hear from you.
Thank you. All right, so we've got four items on our agenda for executive session. And are you anticipating action on any of those items, Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Which item specifically are you anticipating action on today?
That would be the Department Head for exemption for an employee, possible action on the airport for approval to move forward on some action or some issues, and then potentially
I've got four, so.
So the bottom eight, nine, and 10, there may be action. Seven, there isn't anticipated, that's just information.
All right. With that, I'd like to go into executive session. Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
This is executive session under sub-three and sub-one, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
Sure. Executive session.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Seanne, you call it?
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. All right, item seven, we're not going to take any action regarding alliance communication.
I would ask for action for the department head, for the highway department, to have a departure for hiring purposes.
Need a motion?
So move.
Madam Chair?
Okay. Commissioner Gibbon?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Seanne, you call it?
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
The airport, what motion is it that you're asking for?
For the airport, we're asking for a motion to allow the county to expend funds for appraisals for the purposes of investigating the possibility of purchase of land around the airport.
All right, for the request, is there a motion?
I'll so move.
Second.
Thank you. And you guys are all, we don't have anybody here to discuss on any of these items, do we? Doesn't look like, all right. Go ahead, Sean.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. And then we're not addressing item 10?
No, no action.
No action on that is being requested right now. All right, so with that, I would consider a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Sean?
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes, for adjourn. Thanks, everybody.